That you have placed, Father, that we never forget. That you are the one that puts kings, Father God, and you put people in place, Lord. Yes, the people are an instrument, Lord, but you, Father God, are the musician. And so I just thank you right now, Lord, and I ask you for wisdom. I ask you, Father God, for courage, and I ask you for faith right now, Lord, so that each leader that is in charge of this city, Father God, move in the direction that you call, that you see fit best, Father God. We ask for wisdom and clarity, Father God, and we just thank you for 2016. As we know, it'll be a year of transformation. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody, to our meeting tonight and wish everybody a Happy New Year. Glad to have you all here. And we're going to item one, which is our presentation of the donation of checks to the Ronald McDonald House charities of the Regan Valley and Special Olympics and the presentation of the sponsor appreciation plaques in conjunction with the Harlingen Police Department's first annual 5K walk run with Heroes RGV 2015, calling Chief Addicks to make this presentation.
Mayor, Commissioners, and City Manager, thank you very much for allowing us a little time on the agenda today. Today wraps up what's been a great first annual run with the Heroes RGV 5K for the City of Harlingen and the Harlingen Police Department. What we'd like to do is recognize some of our partners in this and some of our sponsors who had a big part in this run. Our district representatives and the police department did an outstanding job, but an event this size cannot be pulled off without a lot of help from a lot of folks in this community. So I'm going to call some names out, and Mayor, if you don't mind helping out with the presentation of the plaques, Orlando will hand them off. And when I call your names, if you're here, please come forward, but I want to read all the folks that were major sponsors or partners. Central Air and Heating Service Frank Matts, Creese's Incorporated Brenda Creese, South Texas Emergency Care Systems, our EMS partners, and Pete Moreno, Director of Support Services, ICT Janitorial Services Isaac Tanner, the owner, Insurance Advisors Agency, Hines Jimenez, Bogus Motor Company Greg Gwisenberry, Knights of Columbus, Council 2785 Rick Garza, Argos Construction Leo Argos owner, Footworks June Aneth Elieermo. Is June here? From Harlingen Fire Department, Fire Chief Roy Rubio, Briggs Equipment, Rosabelle Wolf, Allstate Insurance Edward Anderson, Oil Patch Fuel and Supply Leroy Hatley, China Restaurant Aaron Lynn, KB Foundation of Texas, Karim Bolos, Valley Children's Clinic, Dr. David Sauceda, Antonia Minor, Cigna Health Spring Sylvia Sandoval, Valley Radio Center, Richard Teichner, Harlingen Police Officers Association President Sal Carmona, 421 Productions Rudy Rodriguez, Leoners Healing Touch Massage Leonard Montez, Stefano's Brooklyn Pizza Steve Edick, The Pizzeria Alex Formacio, Extreme Nutrition Arnold Cavassos. I could've just said, "Everybody that has a seat, come up front." While everybody's getting their plaque, I want to say, we had, for our first race ever, I started this race in Austin in 2008, and we had 300 runners in Austin, which is a huge running community. So when we started this race here this year, I told the district reps, "If you get 150 to 200 runners, this is going to be a success in Harlingen." We ended up with over 600 registered runners and almost 700 runners overall for our first year. And this year, our goal is to do 1,000, and I think we're going to reach that goal this September. I think if you look up at the front of the commission and you see the folks up here, and this is representation of what it takes to put on a race of this size. And our first year having this much help was really the key to success. A special shout-out to June Aneth Elieermo, who really were our strongest partner with regard to organization. June and his wife do this all the time here in Harlingen and were a huge resource to us as a department. Can we give everybody a round of applause? And if everybody will stay up here, I'd like to call up representatives from our... Yes, sir.
Do you want to get everybody up front?
I don't know if you have gloves standing for the...
Okay. All right.
Get a picture of him?
Okay. You guys crowd in.
Get out of the way. Yeah, let me get out of the way.
You probably need two rows because we're not going to...
Nobody wants to be in the front.
Get two rows if you want to try. And your Commissioner, you're in the back if you want to come in. There we go.
I want to call up our two recipients. Our two chosen charities this year are the Ronald McDonald House charities of the RGV. Representing them is Developmental Manager Corey Thomas. Corey, if you'll come up front. And from Special Olympics Texas, that serves the RGV, Lotto Garza, Area Director. And we're going to present you...
Oh, my God.
You couldn't find any big checks. So the amount given to both charities is $7,500 apiece for a total of $15,000.
That's what I do, I take the funds.
Chief, can you all lift this thing for a second?
There it is. Come on up, there you go.
I want to say a few words. Have you guys been watching them on social media and everything the police department has been doing? It's so impressive, and every other day you have a new program. You're giving back so much. Just appreciate it so much.
Thank you. I just want to thank the City of Harlingen, Chief Addicks, Deputy Chief Hector Lioz, and Officer Ronald McDonald. He's very, very generous and overwhelming.
It's overwhelming.
So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thanks again. Okay, well, on behalf of the commission, I'm sure the Commissioner wants to join me in thanking the department for sponsoring this run and all of the sponsors. It's been a great program for our community and a job well done. Thank you all.
Mayor, if you would, can I add to that, Mayor? Today is our police chief's one-year anniversary. He's done a fantastic job for our community. I just want to recognize him for the great job he's been doing. Chief Addicks.
All right. Item two is the Neighborhood Clean Sweep held on December 12, 2015 at West Fillmore and West Curtis and West Wright between South F Street and South J Street. Can I have a quote?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. Of course, we had the cleanup. That was our last cleanup for the year. We had it from F Street to J Street. We did Hanson, Wright, Curtis, and Fillmore, all those streets in between. We picked up seven tons of debris. We picked up 91 tires in the area also. We had the Deluette family help us again. There are big helpers in our area. And we also had the Tamayo House kids help us. They're not here today, but they're a great help for us. As you can tell, before and after pictures also. Okay. We are going to have another one in the same area on F Street and J Street. We're going to be doing it, I'm sorry. We're going to be doing it from J Street to M Street. We're going to do between West Fillmore all the way through West Lincoln. That includes J and a half Street, K Street, L Street, L and a half Street, and the M Street. We're going to be doing it this Saturday from 8:00 in the morning till 12:00 noon. We participate, anybody that wants to participate, we really appreciate it. We really need some help out there. We usually get everybody, the same people that always help us. I would like to see your faces out there if possible. That way, we can take some of the burden off these people that help us every Saturday. Also, last year, for the whole year, we picked up 102.19 tons and 1,199 tires. That's in 12 months. And that, we just did that one Saturday out of the month. Except every third month, we do it twice for the citywide cleanup. So that's all I have. If anybody has any questions, I'll be more than glad to answer it.
Hey, may I have any questions? Who has certificates? Hand down. This is District Four. Go. Commissioner, go ahead and hand them out. All right, and right at the top of the list, every single time, raise a load. Do you want to get him up here? Thank you so much. And Catherine? Just here, okay, great. Not a silly, I'm sorry. Right. Don't just use your shirt, we have different ones. Our jersey, thank you so much. And Sergio Branco?
The Tamayo House kids, they're not allowed to come to the city meetings. Okay. I will go to give them tomorrow. Yes, sir.
All right, well, again, these are really important. It would mean so much to keep our community beautiful. This is part of the main, this is the do it. But it's part of the back break. You've got to really get out there and pick this stuff up. And I just want to thank you for your continued support for this program and everybody's participation in it. So our staff has a great job of organizing it and really getting it done. We really appreciate it. So congratulations and thank you. Item three is the approval of the minutes of a regular meeting of December 2nd and a special joint meeting of the Harlingen City Commission and the Harlingen Community Improvement Board of December 7th, 2015. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I have one question or maybe a correction. On page five, the second to the last paragraph at the bottom, it says, "Mr. Bilby stated he reviewed the agreement, and it was a non-legal binding agreement." I think it's supposed to be a non-binding legal agreement, or is that correct the way it was in there?
Non-binding agreement, exactly, but without the legal.
Okay. With that change, I approve.
Second.
With that correction, we have a motion to second to approve. Is there all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item four A through H is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt a consent agenda?
Subtle.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item five, consider and take action to approve a local agreement between the City of Harlingen and Harlingen Irrigation District, Cameron County Number One, granting the city permission to use land for the construction and maintenance of the 25th Street Hike and Bike Trail. Authorize the city manager to sign the agreement.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. This agreement is for, as it's read, the 25th Street Hike and Bike Trail. And this just spells out the responsibilities for each party, what the city's going to be responsible for and the irrigation district, what they're going to be responsible for.
Okay, are there any questions? This is formalized the agreement and the responsibilities for the maintenance of the trail. We appreciate so much the cooperation that we've received from the Harlingen Irrigation District on this project. Is there a motion to approve the agreement?
Subtle.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Item six, consider and take action to approve designs presented by the Texas Department of Transportation that the Tyler Harrison overpass improvement and authorize funding for the 2015 Governor's Community Chief Award.
Mayor Commissioners, this agenda here is presented in order for us to, or the City Commission to actually take action on approving the concept. The concept courses there presented, I have some photos of some of the landscaping, the trees and the shrubs that are actually being recommended by Tech dot. The funding, of course, is coming from the GCAA grant that the city was awarded. And there's $25,000 that's coming from Harlingen Proud, and then the remainder would be from the 4B. The, let's see, that, are they in order? Okay. I have them in order based on the plant description that Tech dot prepared. The first one is that orchid tree. The second one is that Royal Ponciana. And then we've got the, what happened there? The Wild Olive, which is, we have several around the city. They're native trees. We have the Desert Willow. Oops. Are you changing it? Okay. And then, of course, we've got the Cape Myrtle and the Texas Mountain Laurel. And then that one up on top, for some reason, it didn't come out, but it's a Yupon Holly. And then we've got the Esperance on the bottom, the Mexican Ponciana. And then we have the Texas Ponciana on the bottom, the yellow. And then these are the shrubs that Tech dot's recommending. And of course, is the Bird of Paradise. And then that one on top is the Dwarf Powderpuff. And then we have the Butterfly Bush on the bottom, the purple. And then that one on top is the Turk's Cap and the Dwarf Oleander on the bottom. And then we have the Firecracker Plant and the Texas Red Yucca on the bottom, or Yucca, I should say. The Dwarf Seniso up on top and a Durant on the bottom. And then the last one is the Dwarf LaRope or LaRopa. I apologize, for some reason, when I, the Word document, when I transferred it over to a PDF, it didn't have the titles of the plants. But nevertheless, the design, Mr. Seven and I met with Tech dot on a few occasions trying to modify the plan to what we thought would look nice. We reduced some of the plants because he had it really dense, so we kind of reduced the number of plants. We've added the plants, instead of just having it in the island between Harrison and Tyler, we expanded it on either side of Tyler and Harrison. And we also want to include in this project is the lighting underneath the overpass. One thing that I want to mention on the budget, we have two items in here. We're going to have an alt, at alternate, which is the synthetic turf. We like to put turf around the landscaped area instead of having the regular turf, which would increase maintenance. The, that there, that cost is $109,000 is what the engineers estimate is that. So we're going to add, we're going to, when we bid it out, we're going to place it as a bid alternate so to see what the cost comes in at. The cost for the seating, for the turf, is about $348. But then we have to add irrigation for that, so it's another $12,000. So Tech dot's ready to bid this out, just depending on tonight's decision. And the project would take about four months from the time that they award it to the completion time. So if the City Commission's okay, we can let the state know, Tech dot know, to go ahead and bid it out and see what the bids come in at.
We're also working with Tech dot, Mayor Commission, to change out the lines under the overpass area with LEDs, color-changing LEDs. But I think we're going to bid that out separately on our own and simply so that we can move this project forward. I think we can get a better price if we do it ourselves and working with Tech dot to advance funding agreement. And so that's what we plan to do. Once we get the bids back and we see if we're short in any areas or we need more money, we would ask that we present that to the 4B for consideration.
Okay.
And I'll also add that Keith Harlingen Beautiful is contributing $20,000 of the current year's budget towards this project, so we thank him for that next year.
Together with the board, the board also with them.
Javier, you mentioned the I word, irrigation.
Yes, sir.
So it will be drip irrigated?
The plants will be drip irrigated. The grass would be sprinkled with sprinkler heads.
Unless we use synthetic.
Unless we use synthetic.
I was just going to ask.
Okay, and Harlingen Brown likes the design?
Yes, Dan has a question.
Yeah.
Nick Concilio, I'm the president of Keith Harlingen Beautiful Board of Directors. We've been working hand-in-hand with Dan and Javier on this particular design, really since we won the Governor's Award earlier this past, or late last year now. And so we're well ahead of the curve, again, to Dan and Javier's commitment to the project. We're about a year and a half, really, ahead of schedule where we should be at this point, considering when we were awarded the Governor's Award. So we like it. I think it's going to add a lot of color. We're contributing to it because we know it's a big project, it's a big area. When you're driving by at 40 miles an hour, it doesn't seem that big. But if you get out and you walk it around, it's a big area. And we just hope that it's a catalyst, though, to move south along the expressway all the way to Ed Carey. Or next year, hopefully, we're looking at Ed Carey, and we're going to bring it in between the two big intersections in our city to help beautify it. And we like it, and we hope we can get your approval so we can continue to move forward with it. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Commission.
Does the commission have any questions about the project? Then is there a motion to approve the designs presented?
Subtle. Second.
Any discussion? I'd just like to congratulate the staff and the Harlingen crowd, everybody, everyone who's contributed to working toward getting the Governor's Award. I think that's a big deal to be recognized in that way for all of the other work that we've done in the community to improve the beautification of our community. And this is going to make a huge impact. This is at the intersection of our two interstates, I-2 and I-69, and two of the most heavily trafficked streets in our community, Harrison and Tyler. And so I think everyone who's coming in and out of Harlingen, it's going to make a huge impact on how they perceive our community and see it as a beautiful and clean community. So congratulations to everybody on this. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Thank you. Item eight, consider and take, seven, consider and take action to approve facility use agreement between the City of Harlingen and RGV Amateur Adult Soccer Association for use of soccer fields at Vessel Park and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement. Javier?
Yes, Mayor Commissioners. This agreement is identical to last year's, and staff is recommending approval.
Is there a motion to approve?
Subtle. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item eight, consider and take action to approve facility use agreement between the City of Harlingen and the Texas Youth Football Association, the Harlingen Hawks, for use of JV field at Long Sea Hill Park and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement.
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, if I could ask if we can make corrections to that? It's not Harlingen Hawks anymore. That's what their name was. They're actually Texas Wolf Pack now. They've come to the city to request a different location. They used to be operating out of the Wilson Park. And now they've asked for the old JV field, baseball field. And what we've done is we've been able to convert that baseball field into a football field. So we've taken it to the board. The board's approved it, the park advisory board. And they submitted all their documentation that's necessary to approve this agreement. So we're just asking if we can change it to Texas Wolf Pack and change the location to JV field.
So the only thing that's changed is the name. It's the same organization?
Yes, sir.
And certain locations? What improvements have we made to that recently?
To the JV field? What we did was we repaired the electrical service a few years back. It got struck by lightning and was completely out. So we went in, hired an electrical contractor to go and repair the whole thing. And the other thing we're going to do is, in the corner areas of the baseball field, we're going to have to add fencing to it to be able to make it a rectangular area rather than the pie shape.
Are there any plans to maybe, I haven't seen it myself and actually looked at it, but I know some other locations that are used for sports, especially football and soccer, there's been issues sometimes with not enough grass and concerns the kids getting hurt in the Harlingen St. Arthur's. Do we have plans to, and maybe think about if it needs to be reseeded? I know we did some of that, helping to help the grass grow with some irrigation and some watering and some seeding. Have you all incorporated that into the plan or?
Yes. In different sites, we have, of course, irrigation. We're getting them all up and running. And we're also adding the fertilizer to be, you know, to be able to get those up for spring.
Okay, with those changes, is there... Okay, with, with those, uh, changes stated by the staff, Javier, is there a motion to approve the agreement?
Submove, second.
Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign the motion carries. Item nine, consider and take action to approve the facility use agreement between the City of Harlingen and the Harlingen National Bronco League for the use of all fields. Harrison Youth Sports Park, authorize the city manager to sign the agreement. Javier?
Yes, Mayor Commissioners, um, we brought this, uh, to y'all because there is a change in this one. Um, the, um, Harlingen, um, the National Bronco League would like to add, uh, a component to their league. They would like to add, um, youth, uh, kickball. And that's one of the, the programs that we've been trying to push, uh, here in the city. And, um, Mr. Jerry Hernandez has taken on, taken that on, um, and would like to have it for this, uh, this spring, which will start at the end of January and run through March. Uh, the only other organization that has kickball is the Boys and Girls Club. We've contacted them to make sure that there's no conflict, and, uh, they were okay with that.
Okay, any, uh, any questions about that?
So this will be baseball, youth baseball, and kickball?
And kickball, youth, youth kickball.
Y'all run it at the same time?
No, they, they'll, they'll, it'll be, kickball will start before their spring, uh, baseball.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the agreement?
Submove, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign the motion carries. Item 10, consider and take action to approve an amendment of the facility use agreement for season 2015 between the City of Harlingen and the Harlingen Women's Soccer League for the use of the Harlingen Soccer Complice. And authorize the city manager to sign the agreement.
Yes, Mayor Commissioners, the, this agreement here is an amendment, uh, to the existing, um, agreement that we have with the, um, uh, Women's Soccer League. Um, the, the agreement expires in March, um, so, um, what they want to do is they want to offer co-ed, uh, soccer. Right now they have women's soccer, so they want to add the co-ed, uh, component to their league. We've taken this, this one again to the, uh, park advisory board. Um, they made, uh, recommendation to bring this to the City Commission, uh, for approval, and staff is recommending approval as well.
This is adult? Adult?
Yes, it's adult.
And they'll, they'll bring it back for a renewal for the April group?
Yes.
All right, any other questions? Is there a motion to approve the amendment?
Submove, second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign the motion carries. Item 11, consider and take action to approve the renewal of the lease agreement between the Harlingen Department and the mall at Valley Vista. To lease a storefront at the Harlingen Valley Vista Mall for one year, a cost of $1 per year, operate a police drop-in station, and authorize the city manager to sign the lease agreement.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager. Yes, sir, this is a, a renewal that we're asking for, and it's a $1 a year fee, and for us to be able to have a little storefront there where officer can take reports. We also have a box there where they can drop off suggestions and things that the community might want.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the renewal of the lease agreement?
Submove, second.
Any, any discussion? All right, this is, this, this adds, uh, police presence out of the...
Yes, sir, additional police presence.
Uh, it's a high-traffic area, so it's good to, it's good to have that.
Yes, sir.
It's been a, and I guess the mall has, uh, felt like it benefited from, from this purpose.
Well, they love to have us out there, additional manpower.
Okay, very good. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like, like, sign the motion carries. Item 12, consider and take action to accept or reject an award contract for the Harlingen Fire Station Number Two of the bid number 2016.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, City Commissioner?
Javier?
City Manager?
Well, I have to remember many names.
It's only one. Javier, Javier. Uh, I guess I was here, uh, I was going to recommend a word of the fire station project number two to the apparent low bidder, Pietra Construction, but yesterday morning, they withdrew the bid. Currently, the architect is requesting information from the second-lowest bidder, uh, documentation and checking references, uh, which will probably, maybe, be back here if everything goes okay, maybe in the next couple of weeks. So, we're asking to table the item, Mayor Commissioners, give us an opportunity to look at the second low bid and see if we can bring it in with the budget, um, and then we'll bring it back at the next meeting.
Make a motion that we table the, uh, item number 12, second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign the motion carries. All right, thank you all. Item 13, consider and take action to approve an interlocal cooperation agreement between the Ca, between Cameron County, the City of San Benito, and the City of Harlingen for the construction of a cold storage facility at the Free Trade Bridge at Los Indios on GSA, on the property. Authorize the mayor to sign the interlocal cooperation agreement.
Mayor, City Commissioners?
We'll note that, uh, the extension affidavit is filed.
Okay. The Commissioner has excused himself, and he filed an affidavit with you.
Good afternoon. How are you?
Remember a second.
It's a different name, though. Um, I'm glad we're here. This project has actually kind of evolved over time, over the last couple of years, uh, several of the entities that have already been mentioned have been working together to promote Los Indios Bridge. And one of the things that we found out is that because of the lack of some of the amenities, um, some of the shipping companies, um, namely the produce companies, do not use Los Indios Bridge very much, especially for refrigerated items. And the amenity that we're talking about is the lack of cold storage at the bridge site itself. So what this is really talking about, this cooperation agreement, will basically, uh, allow the construction of a cold room, um, about 2,300 square feet, where, um, the customs guys can actually offload some of these trucks when they do their inspections. And this product can go into the cold room rather than sitting on a dry dock in the hot sun and, and lose shelf life, which is why people don't use that bridge right now. So, um, it's a, a fairly, um, effective and efficient way of bringing about an amenity that should draw some additional traffic to the bridge. We'll be glad to answer any questions.
And we have been working with the county and City of San Benito on this project, and, uh, we do have available fund balance for the bridge that we can utilize for the project. The only thing on the interlokal agreement, they are, uh, we ask that we, we approve it tonight, that we approve it, contingent of some revisions to the agreement, uh, mainly where it says the county will not pay for anything other than construction. Uh, because we still need to work out an agreement related to the maintenance and operation of the facility, uh, which is stipulated in the interlokal itself. So, we'd like to move this ball forward, uh, and, uh, take it back to San Benito for their final approval, and then move on to the maintenance and operation. The staff is recommending approval.
So when I make your motion, you just make it subject to the city manager and the city attorney making some revisions to the language, really, just to clarify some things, uh, before the mayor signs it.
Okay, is there, um, is there a motion to approve the interlocal agreement, subject to the revisions, uh, to be approved by the city attorney as recommended by the city manager?
Submove, second.
Any other discussion? Uh, this is a great project, and it really is a, I think, a big step forward to trying, uh, to increase the traffic out of the, uh, uh, Free Trade, uh, Free Enterprise Bridge. So, I'm excited about this, and also the, uh, working cooperatively with San Benito and Cameron County to make this project happen. So, congratulations to everybody that's, uh, gotten this, uh, across the goal line here. Is there, okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign the motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Item 14, consider and take action to approve an ordinance on first reading, adopt, adopting and enacting a new code of ordinances for the City of Harlingen.
Amanda? Mayor, I just want to announce that we're happy that we, uh, completed the review on the code. Um, we, uh, met with the, um, attorney from municipal code. Um, they reviewed the code of ordinances book, they, they submitted the changes. We went over the changes with, uh, Mr. Roger Marion, he's the attorney. And, uh, we met with the key, um, department heads regarding the changes. We think we have, um, a good organization as far as the book. Um, it has a lot more headings for, for easier reference. Um, it, it, some old language was deleted, new language was put in to make sure that it complied with the, uh, Texas, um, State Constitution, State law, city charter, and, um... This is all we need, Mayor, we need the approval of the ordinance and the second meeting next, next meeting, and, um, ready to go. It'll be, uh, put online, and, um, you'll see.
So we just have a link on our iPad that we can access it.
Oh, yes, 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 you can, you can do that, too.
Amanda and Rick have worked through this, and, uh, I could hear their lengthy discussions from the office. I'm, I'm for one glad it's over.
Well, this is...
It was all the discussions, Mayor, it was all the discussions.
This is one of those, you know, monumental tasks that goes on behind the scenes that nobody knows anything about or sees anything. It's not something that's going to get in the newspaper, probably, I don't know, maybe Fernando will put something in the newspaper. But it's not something that, you know, is, uh, but it's, it is a big job, y'all have been working on it for a long time, it's something that we really, really needed. It's going to be good for the public, because the public are going to be able to access the code of orders, the laws of the City of Harlingen in a much more transparent and accessible manner. And so, y'all are going to be congratulated on this, we thank you for your work. So, if, uh, Rick, you would read the question?
An ordinance adopting and enacting a new code for the City of Harlingen, Texas, providing for the repeal of certain ordinance that had included, providing a penalty for the violation of our providing for the manner of the venue of such code and providing when such code and this ordinance shall be enacted.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
Submove, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign the motion carries. All right, item 15, board appointments. Item 16, citizen community.
If I may, I'd like to introduce our new public information officer, Melissa Landine. Melissa, and Melissa, what, came to us from Cameron County, where she worked as a public information officer for the VA's office. She also previously worked as communications director for South Friday Island Convention and Inquisitor View, and was the city editor for the Bonneville Hill. So, we welcome Melissa and, uh, put her to work today, she said today's her first day, and she hit the ground running.
All right, well...
And I also want to, I'm sorry.
Well, welcome, welcome to the City of Harlingen, glad to, glad to have you on our staff.
And I also want to introduce Rodrigo Dabila, R&amp;D planning director. Rodrigo comes to us from the City of San Benito, where he was planning director for several years, and we look forward to his leadership in that department. Excited for him to be here. Today, Walt, is also his first day.
I'm sure Dave is excited for the day. All right, well, welcome, welcome to the City, we're glad to have you on our staff. All right, thank you, well, then that completes our meeting for tonight, again, Happy New Year.